This conference will now be recorded.
All right, Rock, you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Monday, April 1st. Based on court hours, a special meeting available by go-to meeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. We have a motion approved agenda.
No motion to approve the agenda.
A motion is our second?
Our second is.
Second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
All right. All say aye, motion carries. Fiscal Year 25 Truth in Taxation Public Hearing. Open the hearing at 9:00. Was the public notice public and the correct newspapers posted online and available at the auditor's office?
Yes.
Any written or oral comments?
I have oral comments.
We'll go with the board first, Betty. Anything, Jim?
I did nothing.
No.
No.
I just had questions. What it was about.
Todd, anything?
I don't see him online unless he's under a collar, 01.
I had nothing either. Hey, Betty?
Well, I guess I had questions. I just want to better understand this. And under the, both the city and the school, you know, they had the reasons. And under county, it didn't have anything, but I was curious, and I did visit with Jim about it. The current tax rate for the rural basics, that would be before the, the current one is before the state reduced the general levy and the rural basic levy. So actually, the current levy that we're under now would be 3.95 for the actual, for the rural basic.
No.
No.
Okay, I want to know why it was down to 3.86681. Was that because of the rollbacks?
No, that's because of House File 718. The state did that to us.
But did they reduce those taxes for the 2023, 2024?
No, it's based upon the, what your tax increase growth was. So we grew, I want to say it was like 9%.
Okay.
And the state in that House File 718, they are only going to allow you to grow so much. And if you grow more than that, there's a calculation that reduces your levy rate back.
Okay, so, but then, did that happen with the county, the 3.5?
The general, the general, it's the rural vote.
Okay.
So put us in it. There's a 3% formula and a 6% formula affected by that.
So what does the effective tax rate mean?
That means what if we were using last year's levy rates with this year's valuations, that's what it would be.
Last year's tax rate and this year's valuation. So that is what you're going to be using?
No, we're using the actual.
You're using the proposed tax rate?
Correct.
Right, which is more than the effective tax rate.
Correct. We're using this year's tax levy rates, proposed ones. This is the, which is the.
Levy and, okay, last year's, just a minute. Last year's levy and the.
This year's valuation.
Valuation change. I'm just writing down what is under the current. I just want to understand these things.
You said, that's fine, yep.
And I see that, I guess I wanted to know, I talked to Jim about it, and he said it's because of the supplemental?
The, well, the rate that you see, are you looking at the one that we got?
Because it went up a little more than it was last.
So if you looked in the, the 5.63297?
Right, I did.
That's a combination of our general, basic, and our supplemental.
I understand that. No, I understand that.
Yep.
And the supplemental is about two-thirds of that whole thing.
The supplemental this year ended up, do the math, the supplemental is 2.23491.
I have that written down, yeah. I did the subtraction, yeah. But anyway, I wondered exactly, and I looked at the code to see what came under supplemental because, you know, a lot of those things, when I was on the board, they no longer do. I mean, and it's a lot has to do with the mental health and so, and, you know, we don't ask for anything for mental health now for very rich mental health. We don't ask for anything. We don't ask for anything from very rich anymore, you know. But anyway, I was wondering, on the supplemental, and Rachel, you can probably tell me what comes under that, because I looked and it said that you can have employee benefits associated with salaries for general county services. So is that something that comes under general sub?
Yep, so insurance, I've got Ivers.
I've got, yeah.
And then all elections go under there.
Right, I've got elections.
Courts.
Courts.
And maintenance of courts.
Yep.
And then is all of your insurance, your tort liability, and all of those things, property insurance, everything is under supplemental now?
Correct.
Okay, and it has been?
Yes.
For a long time? Okay. And there's very little of that, because I haven't seen, because you haven't got the budget out yet, but I haven't seen how much of that is under like foster care and, you know, there's a number of those things that affect children. And I don't know what, what you're paying anymore for our adults that are in like comp systems and, yeah, I don't really know.
I don't really know.
But you're paying some.
For?
It used to be that we paid a certain percentage of all that, and it was pretty big.
I don't have the number for you, so I don't think you know.
So do you still get billed from all those places where our adult people that are being served like comp systems and?
So I, we get a bill from Floyd County, the district, that's what we pay, but.
Okay. And that they're the people that take care of it for the whole district?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was just curious about that. Well, I guess honestly, you answered my questions.
Okay.
How about that?
That's great.
But I was wondering if everybody knew the, the answer. I knew you, you told me about supplemental, but I just thought, gosh, when I subtracted that, the supplemental amounts to 2.23491. If you subtract that from your general basic of, if you subtract that from the 5.5898, you know, and, or the 5.63, excuse me, 297, you subtract the 3.39806 from that, it comes up with 2.23491, which is pretty hefty for supplemental. That's what I'm talking about, you know, it's about two-thirds of what the general basic would be. So anyway, well, I would, I mean, the state has been doing some bad things to city and county government and schools. Your best government is at the local level, where you get your services. And people are answerable. They're accountable. And the state, in all their wisdom, they're a city, they're, they're a citizen legislature. I mean, they meet, you know, part of a year. And they don't know anything about county and city and everything, but in their great wisdom, here they are reducing the levy, you know, where we get our services. And they're doing, you know? And that rollback thing, you know, they could have eaten that with all the money that Governor Reynolds says she has in the reserve. It was their mistake, the rollbacks. So they should have eaten that instead of passing it back, you know, to the cities and counties and so on. So I guess really, you answered my questions. How about that? I bet you thought I was going to give you. No, I was just really curious because, you know, you and I talked, and I was curious about the supplementals. And now I see, and for how long have you had to be paying like the benefits for employees because you didn't have nothing there?
So it's not up here?
Pardon me?
It's not up here? It's been coming out as supplemental?
I know we increased supplemental in the last couple of years. We, we put some more in there.
You know, I remember when I was on the board, I mean, the supplementals were mainly for, I mean, they were, they were not big. They were for the mental health, you know? So, but I did look it up in the code, and I see, you know, elections and all those things that can come under it, so I was just curious.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Kathy Penny, President of Vol Sage. Question, just a clarification on that effective tax rate. It would be if you were going to ask for the same amount of dollars on the, with the increased valuation, if you were asking, if you were receiving the 400 dollars.
If we were using the same levy rate or asking for the same amount of dollars only based on this year's valuation?
But the, the rate and the dollars, when you put the valuation in that formula, changes the, the calculation. So if you say that you're, you're not asking for the same rate, you're asking for the same, if you would ask for the same dollars, the rate would be 5.12?
Okay, yes, correct, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Yes.
That was the part that was being.
Yeah.
And that was it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
March, glad a few people showed up.
Yes, it's good.
I mean, that they were interested.
Yes, Dan?
Well, since basically some of the department's budgets would affect the total tax asking, I do have a statement I'd like to read.
Sure.
And I gave each one of you a copy of, this is apparently the proposed budget from Economic Development. And so without a reference, Economic Development's proposed budget. To begin with, this document has no beginning balance. We have no idea what funds, if any, are being carried forward. Next, there is a request of county funds in the amount of $97,750. Is this amount a request from general basic, rural basic, or are these new tax increment finance funds being requested? It makes no reference of any of that. There is a new item of state childcare grant totaling $666,734. I understand Sherri Penny obtained this grant, which Ms. Penny should be praised for her efforts. That was a very good grant, and it's going to help Mitchell County, I think, considerably. So again, want to make that note that she should be praised for that grant. There is an item of membership dues from $18,000 to $1,500. There is no explanation for this substantial drop in this line item. It is concerning to me, and it should be to you, why this huge drop in membership dues. The revenue side of the equation now shows an increase to $824,368 from $174,112, or a substantial increase of $650,256. Now to the expense side, advertising and marketing is up $6,000 with no explanation on how this is to be spent or why the increase is necessary. Health insurance increased from $20,000 to $30,000. This is a 50% increase. Why did this line item increase 50%? There is no explanation for the increase of $10,000. Payroll, this is an important one, increased from $104,000 to $114,000, or a 9% increase. I thought the pay raises this county were substantially less. I thought the board was saying that they wanted various outside of the elected officials and that to be 3% to 3.5%. Why was there a substantial pay raise given to, excuse me, wasn't there also a substantial pay raise given to Economic Development last year, if I'm not mistaken? How was this pay raise being distributed and justified? Is this pay raise increase being split, or is it just being to one person? None of this shows up in part of the line items that should be part of this. Next, we come to back to that childcare centers line of an expense of $566,734. 566,734 is a reduction from the grant of $100,000. There is a $100,000 discrepancy. Why is this $100,000 showing up in the budget? We have, or where is this showing up in the budget? We have no idea. Is this $100,000 being placed in savings, or was it meant to be spent? Daycare wages. Again, we have no idea because it doesn't show up here, any place in the budget. So also, how is this 566,734 being supposed to be divvied out? Are all the daycares in the county receiving funds for the increased payroll, and will this be distributed proportionately? Why isn't there a line item explaining how these monies are being proposed to be distributed? And then, there is no ending balance shown. There are $53,502 more dollars being asked for than what is being proposed, being spent. Why? I did have some questions because Supervisor Fryne does sit on that board, and I had some questions for him, but obviously, he's not here, so I can't ask him. But I do have a second thing, second item. Since this board has ordered to use tax increment financing in their budget, I have a public request from 65 citizens, right here are the requests. And I'll give this to, to be filed, asking the board supervisors to use TIF, tax increment financing as a loan, to be paid back through their increased property taxes as a stimulant for new housing. I only had one individual who refused to support this request. This individual was not against new housing, but was upset that this commercial incentive program that also was part of this housing program assisted an individual for a commercial building. And I believe, Betty, you had also got signatures on this same last year.
Right.
For, was it 20-some signatures?
I don't remember how many.
Yeah, I think it was 20-some signatures. So the board supervisors, I really believe, should set up a committee with public participation on future use of tax increment financing, not for this year. I can go along with what you propose for this year, but for next year. The loans for housing needs to be a priority, which will keep property taxes steady or lower in years to come. I would request this committee to be set up in the near future, and I want to thank you for your time and for your understanding.
So to hit some highlights on that.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to speak up.
I'll try to speak up as much as I can, Stan. You, Jenny, help me out. Then the health insurance, we didn't have the correct number.
I don't even think we got the right budget, because it wasn't 3,000. So maybe you have the incorrect one. There was one that was put out initially, and then we had to revise it based on the actual cost. So I'm not really sure you're working on it.
So there's a lot of the ones that you highlighted that were actually incorrect, and we needed to decrease them, so.
This is the budget I got from the auditor. And I came to the auditor just a few weeks ago to ask if there was updated budget, and it was told no.
And I'm just letting you know, in that meeting that we had, we went through all this and asked all the same questions that you had, and we saw that there was some different answers, especially for the health insurance, I believe, that we wrote down that were just different, and she didn't have the right calculation, maybe. And she explained why the dues were lowered in that one section. And the marketing went up due to the, the childcare. Yep, so that's why the marketing went up.
But John should be able to answer all the questions.
But yes, so. We've already went through this, like, we've already went through it here with you guys, you've already went through it. My board, because yes, there's some numbers on there that maybe look a little alarming. But we've already discussed all those things.
We've all been notified, the same questions, same issues that you brought to us, we've already went through with Jenny and discussed, and I think the, the new budget is lower. But were she still asking the same amount flat out across from last year?
So the childcare is kind of the only thing, like, it looks like we're getting a lot of grants, but that grant's going to be income, but it's also going to be an expense.
Yeah.
So that $660,000 paid it, that we're getting is also going to be a.
Yeah, so.
So it looks a little, it might look like we have a surplus on there. We don't.
Yeah, just so you know, we, we did ask the same questions that you had, so.
And that childcare grant, I serve on that childcare coalition board. It's going to lap over two fiscal years. It's, yeah, in process right now, and then it's continuing from July until September. So there are federal draws or your state draws. You'll be into, the money's going to be spent by September, so you'll be into October, November before.
Yeah.
The state plan.
Right, Jim, anything else? You guys remember from that meeting? I remember that we went through all that, so I.
You did real well, the healthcare from here before.
Did I understand that every single childcare person was going to get the $2 raise?
Every license.
Every registered writers, yeah.
And then in-home, they're also getting like.
Right, yeah, if you're in-home, they're registering, yes.
And that's if they choose to take the.
Yeah.
Because every employee was given.
Right.
And decided a document that said they wanted to receive this or not.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So yes, we did go and answer all those same questions that you brought, so thanks for bringing it back up. And I don't know, Todd, are you online? Doesn't happen to you?
No, I don't.
I don't see Todd, so.
No, I don't.
Circling back to the letter that we all received on the, on the backside where it says TIF property tax, everything says zero. And just curious why it shows up like that, or what the.
Yep, so you probably live in a non-TIF area, or your taxes, it is, so 0% of your taxes would go to TIF.
Okay.
So if you're in a TIF district, it would show up in there. Yeah. Yeah, so determine what district you're in.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm looking at that going, Vol Sage says $2. But I don't happen to live in the TIF district, that's fair. Okay, thank you.
Rachel, would you happen to have, off the top of your head, exactly, or the amount that we would still owe in TIF and TIF at the end of this June? You make a, you make a big payment then, right?
We do in, for the June 1st. I don't know what our payments are this year off the top of my head. I do know for the urban renewal, when I calculated what was left as of now, so before those payments was 21 million.
And of that 21 million, is that part of what Valant would be paying then too?
Correct.
And so really, what the county, and I understand it all has to come under county debt, but what the county themselves would be paying, I understand that there's been some talk as people have been going door to door, that we have the biggest debt of any county, you know, and.
Yeah, I don't look at all that.
Well, well, we don't, I mean, in TIF.
It, the, the state defines debt a number of different ways.
Right.
And all of us, we define debt as far as if we go out and get a loan, we have debt. But the state encompasses it a number of different ways, and it can be a rebate process like Valant, just like what you said. We are actually going to be receiving tax dollars and 20% of it, sending 80% of it back. But the whole package of the rebate process we're doing, the state considers that, even though we're getting 20% back.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, well, a lot of people in the county do not understand that, so you asked a question, so I'm speaking to everybody. So they define debt differently than what we do in our household.
But actually, I mean, the payments on the bonds and everything, they're pretty minimal anymore. I mean, when you're getting down, when you look at the overall and the, and the amount that payments are making, you know, and, I mean, there isn't a lot of debt anymore on the TIF bonds. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I think that is being conveyed a different way around the county. Maybe people don't understand.
Our debt limit is 5% of our taxable valuation, but we are, we are considerably.
And that 5% debt limit would be how many million?
90 million, I believe. I believe it's 90 million something.
And, you know, we're at about 21 million now, you said? And of course, part of that is Valant, I mean, what Valant would be paying, not us, but it has to show as our debt.
It's how they, it's how they define debt.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think there are some that don't understand that.
Correct.
You take 90 million divided by 10,000 people, that's a lot of debt per person.
Mike, you have to speak up.
I said you take 90 million and divide it by 10,000 people in the county, that's a lot of debt per capita.
But we aren't, we don't have that kind of debt.
Well, even 21 million and 10,000 people is a lot, but.
But take, take how much of that is being paid by Valant, and how much is being paid by the tax increment of the county, and it isn't much. And, you know, I look at the positive things that have happened with the tax increment financing, you know, and it couldn't have happened otherwise, so, you know, it's been, I say a God said.
It's a way to improve the county.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? Anybody online? Somebody's on there.
I hope people are here, but nothing to chat.
I have one comment, just to jump back to the, that House File 718. I said it was like 7% taxable growth. We had an 8.9% taxable growth this last year, but because of their limitation, limitation percentage of 3% in the calculation, it drops us down to a 5.73% in the figures.
Well, I knew there was a reason, Rachel.
So Mitchell County had pretty good growth. Yeah.
Well, if you look at the assessed value, the growth in the assessed value would be huge. And then you apply the rollback, and you still have.
Yeah.
How much of the rollback changed from one to the next?
I know the county assessor, Amy, she had a whole stack of papers. She had the under end, it was new.
Oh, yeah.
New assessments. There's always a lot of, a lot of buildings going on.
I mean, it's amazing the amount of construction and growth in this county is phenomenal.
Doing good.
And then it's frustrating that the state throttles that with the way they handle property tax situation.
We got penalized for having good growth, basically. That's what we did.
It was their attempt at moving the 30-some counties back to 3.5 general basic rate, and they punished all of us.
Because we have good growth.
Yes.
Yep.
So now that you're disincentivizing.
Growth. I figured that we had $70 million in growth, 70, 70.8 million dollars in growth this year, based, compared to last year, based on what the turbines value increase was. The turbines were 34.61% of that, so the bulk of the growth was not the turbines. Bulk of the growth was commercial, residential, everything, so.
Any other public comments?
I just have a question, I guess.
Yes.
According to the Iowa Department of Management, 25.2% of the valuation of Mitchell County is currently taxed under TIF rules. What could possibly happen to tax rates and that around the county if that money was allowed to flow into the the county's general fund and where it's been real basics instead of being held at TIF account? Would that possibly lower tax rates?
Well, I would think taxes, property tax. Well, I would think taxes, property taxes could go down if you had a 25% increase in your intake.
I have a comment, but I'll let everybody else speak first.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim. Okay, so if, the, the thing about that is that, uh, the schools are roughly, roughly 40% of our taxes is, is what we pay for the schools. And the schools are getting, uh, backfill from the state in regards to what we've captured from the schools. The schools are not going to lower your, lower their levy rate because they're already getting that 87.5% backfill. If that backfill goes away, they're still going to need that money, so their levy rate is not going to go away. And because they're the bulk of our property taxes, our property taxes are not going to go down, down that si-significantly. Now, to answer.
It's going to go down.
So to answer your other part of your question is, those turbines were captured so we could do positive things for the county. The way the code is read is that if they restrict us as far as how we can do things with the regular property tax system for what we all pay to go into the treasurer's office, all we all write that check, the state has restrictions on how that money can be spent, which is not a bad thing, that's okay, but it also restricts it as far as what we can build and what we can do. If, if we did not have the, they also have code items that say, you can do positive things, but you're going to have to follow this code item to do it. 403, 404, 15 and 15A are four of those that we can do positive things in the county. So the turbines were captured for the purpose of doing positive things in the county. If we run that money through those, we are doing good things for this county. We're not creating a big bankroll and saving money or whatever, we're doing things that are going to improve this county with that money. This year's budget reflects that. If a person looks at the things that we've got proposed that we're going to do, we're going to build, we're going to, we're going to do some very positive things for this county. It's not money that's being wasted. And if all that money was in the regular property tax system, you probably have to have a, a debt service, uh, levy placed in the property tax system in order to do that, because you wouldn't be able to use the regular property tax money to do that.
Well, that would go back to the way things used to be done where the public was more involved in the precision-making processes, rather than have two or three people be able to direct millions of dollars. That is what TIP wants, remove money from the budgeting process, and it eliminates the, the question of public bonds.
Right.
So, you know, like, that, and you, and you can talk about how that won't decrease taxes, but the reality is 25% more property is taxed into the county system. That's going to be able to fund, you know?
Yeah.
The things that we need to fund that the county funds.
No, not the same way we do it because of the way they put restrictions on the way it gets funded. No, you need.
Well, why would they restrict it?
Because that's in, in home rule, it says it right in there. It is in the code.
As far as what, what code do you, why would, why would anyone be restricted?
331.
Why would it be restricted?
Because they wrote it that way, I don't know, ask the legislature. And if you want to talk about why three people, you picked on three people, can dictate the way those funds go and to be used, it's because the code allows this board to do that. It is wrote in the legislature that we can use those codes, we're not doing anything illegal, it's the way it is, you can do that. So if people have a problem with that, contact the legislature.
Well, and that goes back to what many studies have cited in the state, including Iowa State, uh, University of Iowa, and a lot of other, uh, legislators and people at the Iowa Department of Management, is that the TIP laws are written so loosely that it becomes this animal out there that individual counties and cities can use. I mean, we, we, there needs to be some conservative values and spending put at that and preserve, you know, some of those dollars to pay for the county services.
Well, that's a legislature question, or have they already read it?
It's a question that comes to the people who are serving us or counties.
Yeah, we are using the code the way we can use it, it's a better county.
Now, actually, the urban renewal law came into effect in the 1950s sometime. That's what started this whole thing. And they are going by the urban renewal code, and, and they have to do things by the urban renewal code in order to spend the TIP money. And cities were allowed to use that for years and years, nobody ever, you know? Anyway, then when fin, it was in the 1990s when finally the county was allowed to do everything that the cities had been doing for a long time. And they're doing it right, I mean, they're, they're abiding, uh, under the urban renewal plan. Before you spend any of those TIP dollars, it has to go through all that process.
But if the money wasn't dedicated in the TIP, then it would be available for the entire county, is that correct?
A portion of.
If money wasn't originally dedicated to the TIP account, it would be available for the county.
So to answer your question, a portion of it would do, would be, but we, but we are doing more with it this way.
Well, that's a judgment.
Mr. Oregon's a factor.
Well, if you do not put that incentive out there, small towns like St. Andrew cannot support bringing businesses in. Way, and until that asset has grown, nobody's paying any back. Once the tech asset is in place, then it's taxed like everybody else is, and the city pays back a portion that they use to help support to the person paying the tax. There's a growth pool.
Yeah, but you.
You don't want to grow, then don't use it.
No, but what, what it's done for us is.
Phenomenal things. Um, yeah, we wouldn't have a public safety center, because you got, if you had to take a public safety center to the vote of the people and get 60% approval to increase your taxes to pay for a fire station, a police station, how many years would it take you to accomplish that? We wouldn't have an aerial truck because we wouldn't have a place to put a larger fire truck in, in the old fire station. Streets, water mains, sewer mains to serve industrial areas. Potentially, I mean, water rates paid for, water revenue bonds to build a, a water tower, but TIP funds can also be used for, you know, to supplement those bond payments, so it doesn't come, it's not a property tax to come for. Um, geez, roads to Surphox River, Arctic, also manufacturing, everything on the north end, everything on the south end. ASZ's continuous expansion. In ASZ's case, they do the building and we do a rebate. They get 80% back of their increased taxes for each one of those projects they do, the city captures the 20%. I'm not sure how that plays into the county side of things, but they are constantly growing because ballot is growing. Yeah, so many.
All pos, all positive things for the public good.
Demolishing decrepit buildings, so new homes can go in their place with an increased taxable value. You know, for families, for students for the school, for senior living. All those housing opportunities are bringing people, people to town from California and Florida and they drove through town, they liked the way it looked. And they want to get out of the rat race in the rest of the world.
To me, a natural growth is terribly important. I mean, if you're going to grow a county, you know, cities, I mean, I look at how prosperous all of our little towns were years ago. Oh, they've all dried up, so, you know, but I look now, and we really want to have, we don't want to move our county backwards, do we? I look at economic development as being a real tool, so like Kathy said, you're bringing people in. Any new housing, any of those new things is bringing more taxable valuation to the county. You know, in the long run, even if you do support it and, you know, and maybe giving them some grant or something, a small grant upfront for an incentive, you're going to grow the county in your taxes over time. So I, you know, I just don't understand why people would be, not understand how that works.
Well, I think many people understand, but we're looking for a balance in how this is viewed. I mean, there needs to be a, some real direction and a real plan on this. Many counties that got in substantially and spending TIP, but have now backed off. If you do some research, you will discover that, that they have just, you know, they're, they're lowering their debt, they're not using TIP in the way that it has been in the past because it, it, it simply didn't really produce the economic value and increase that they thought it was producing through the use of those tax dollars. And, and there again, that's backed up by studies at Iowa State, University of Iowa. The, the tax increment dollars, in reality, when you, when you stretch those out, they haven't really provided a big jump in economic activity if you think they would have, rather than just letting the economy grow and businesses grow what they would have, so. I mean, the studies are out there.
We have, we have a difference of opinion on that.
No, we don't, we, uh, we don't have a difference of opinion, but opinion based on fact.
I see, I see the results of what we've done. So in 2009, we did a $9 million paving project in the north part of the county. Largest local project in the state of Iowa's history, funded majorly by TIP at that time. That's because a lot of the bonds that we have were developed, we did not have enough turbine money coming in at the time, so a lot of the bonds were purchased at that time for that process. In 2011, we had a $13 million paving project in the state, in, in Mitchell County. I see the positive things, I drive on those roads. Those are positive things that those turbines put on the ground for this county. So I don't have to see the studies in the state of Iowa, I am living in a study that's in Mitchell County for that. I can see it right here.
Well, I can, I can agree, infrastructure uses and that for TIP.
That's what we're doing.
That's all, you know, perfectly, should be on the table and should be used for the development of the county. But when you get into some of these other areas, you know, that doesn't, that's not creating economy.
Well, then, then we do agree because everything in this year's budget is infrastructure improvements. So, so I, I, I'm sorry that I said that, because we do agree that.
Well, that's fine.
Yep. As, as long as we're doing something that's going to improve the base
and not be giving money out to private individuals, private companies, private, you know, organizations to do construction. That's not the point of, that was never the point of TIP. The point of urban renewal was to create the infrastructure to encourage and enhance the ability of businesses.
And that, that's what we're doing.
That's what, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Yep.
Could I offer one quick moment? Um, was, was there somebody back here who wanted?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The thing that, the thing that nobody's mentioned, and I, uh, I'm going to go back a few years here. When I graduated, we had 169 graduates. In today's economy, we, we got by with a lot less than we're getting by right now. The one thing that bothers me is people's values and expectations have gone skyrocketing. And economic development is good as long as somebody is responsible for, that's profiting of that, not a new element. In my mind, going, going to, into construction to get more people incentive to construct more housing is a good idea, but they're taking, they're taking it from Peter and Paul's ones profiting on this. So I think Paul needs to be more responsible than Peter, and Peter being a taxpayer, and Paul being the person that's getting the money to do this construction, to pay that back to the tax base or the community as helping grow the community. Uh, economic development is good if it's, if it's, if the, if the funds are going from the right place to the right place. And what I'm seeing is the school bond issue got voted down twice, and they, they took the money from somewhere else. In other words, we can't get Peter, so we're going to go over here and get, we're going to steal the, we're going to steal the ball, he doesn't care, but Peter cares. So the, the public opinion has been, has squashed and diminished as to what the public wants. And, and I see that people that we voted into office, they think that they're more important and they know more about what needs to be done as a parent to their children. So I see the public being treated like a bunch of children, and their opinions don't mouth to hell of beans because the children don't understand, that's what you're saying to the public. I think it's time that the public is better educated like you're doing today, so they understand what's going on instead of, instead of nobody, and, and people need to come to you and ask you those questions too, but I think it would be a great idea to have a way to educate more people as to why you're doing what you're doing. And, and we, the one, the one message that we're sending to our children today that I don't like is it's more important to come involved in athletics than, than, than the learning process that we start out from. And that's education, that's a struggle in the community, learning how to raise our own kids, learning how to be a spouse, learning how to, to use common sense, none of that has ever been brought forward. And so why are we so worried about growing the community to help pay the expenses? And not, not, and they're not worried about values of the community. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions in my mind as to why we're trying to balance a budget when we're not worried about the, the future of our children. And in my mind, it's, it's crazy.
I guess, you know, I, my kids learned a different way, and I learned a different way, and so did you, Russ, than they do today. Would you expect our kids to go back to learning the same way?
No, I expect, I expect the values to stay the same.
And that's got to come from the home.
Right.
And, and so that goes back to, to who was, who was actually, uh, teaching these parents how to become parents? Uh, nobody. Everybody, everybody's entitled to their own thing, and everybody's entitled to their own values. But what, what I see right now that's happening is there's sports going on on Sunday mornings. Used to be church was on Wednesday nights, and nobody did that on Sundays. Uh, there's too much value going towards, yeah, athletics and not as much going to education. I, I'm done.
Good, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Oh, I forgot, we had to start here by schools and kids. Um, so just to, to maybe address Al's point about TIP and its explosion in, in the way it's used around, be by cities and counties now. There have also, pretty much every legislative session, there are bills that are introduced and oftentimes passed to offer more, provide more restrictions on the uses of TIP, on the requirements for local governments for hearings and notifications and, um, things that um, TIP dollars could be, you know, put into a city account, and it took it away from the school for bond issues or the county for bond issues or bond payments, um, for school couple. And all of those have been, have been clawed back by the state over the years, so there is legislative restrictions that are ever increasing on how TIP can be done. TIP can be a wonderful tool, TIP can also be, um, a many-headed monster. And so it's up to the local elected officials to make those tough choices on, um, what sometimes end up being judgment calls, what I, I consider a value of infrastructure, is that really a needed infrastructure? Is it just a, a beefing up of adequate infrastructure? Economic development, housing, all of those things are a judgment call. Um, so that's what elected officials are, are responsible for making those choices, and they're not, they're not easy.
I agree.
Mr. Oregon?
Um, if you want to get educated about local government, you guys have a meeting every week yet, right? I don't see this place plugged up every week to see what you're doing. Come here and find out what the county is doing. They're not hiding anything, and as far as the state goes, get online and. Get online and throw, see what kind of junk they're throwing in the hoppers down there in Boda. You'll get your eyes opened up there too. It's been pretty heavy handed down at the state level and people need to stay in tune in what they're doing. Morals come from within, so. I don't think you guys can change my morals in the county.
I try.
I'm not going to.
You're saying you're courting?
I'm not courting. I'm done.
All right, Jane, may I have any comments?
I, I go to, as far as the county TIP goes, I go to meetings where there's a lot of other county supervisor. As far as the county TIP goes, I go to other meetings where there's a lot of other county supervisors there. Like the one, I know there's at least twenty. And we talk about things after the meeting, before the meeting. And, and you look on the state website, the amount of TIP counties have has drastically went down. And a lot of those counties tell me, they say, you get your TIP debt paid off, you'll have all that money for hand, you can borrow property taxes, and we don't have a problem with anything they said. Because they got rid of their TIP debt, which makes sense. And that's why everybody's not using it like they were. They found out that it, they did and it works better to leave well enough alone. And I read them studies from Iowa State, Illinois State, that counties and towns that did use TIP had a better economic growth than the ones that did. And look at the growth we had this last year here. And that was without using any TIP, so, you know. The statistics prove it, so. And I don't think the other, every other county is wrong.
Well, I'd just like to know the other counties. Yeah, I mean, you don't have to give them to me today, but.
Oh, the other counties.
You know, I don't know.
Well, I like, since I had Eldora and there's like twenty other counties.
Yeah, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's a, I could give you the list of the counties and people that are there. Yeah, they all say the same thing, so. And then the statistics show it too from the university studies. Russ?
Um, I'm not sure how many you own and operate your own businesses, but every business is going to look at how much interest they pay out on what they have to borrow versus the least amount of interest paid out. It's called expense. Control your expenses by not borrowing any more money than you have to. And I think I'll agree that if you find that you can operate your county without borrowing money, in the end comes, the money you're spending on interest can go back towards helping grow the county. I, I agree that that would be, sometimes you have to borrow money, but not, if you don't get into the habit of borrowing it when you don't need to borrow it, I think that's a good thing too.
Yeah, so to note to that, everything we're doing this year, we are not borrowing any money. We are not borrowing any money.
That's really great.
And it's defined to be legal in the code. Four oh three, it's either point one seven or point one nine. It's called indebtedness.
That's a positive thing then.
But you're still dragging out the TIP debt longer.
Well, that you wouldn't have TIP debt. You have to have asset to have tax debt.
And the tax increment does pay the interest.
Exactly.
Right.
How, I gotta, how can you take money out of the TIP account without debt? I, I don't know that, that that's possible by law, is it?
Yeah, because they define it, they find, they find debt a number of different ways. One of the ways is if you buy a general obligation bond, that's one way, that's a loan. Another way is if you do a rebate process like we're doing with the Grand Elevator, OSH Coa, Valant, A to Z, that's considered debt. Another one is called indebtedness. And if you look at one of those two, I can't remember which one it is. Indebtedness is defined as being simply you certi, we have a project that we want to do. We're going to, we're going to help fund the fairgrounds fair building this year. They want to, they want to get rid of the show arena and some of the pens. We're going to help fund a new one. The, the existing one's going to be used this fair, but then after that, they want to replace it. So we're going to help fund that new building. We certify that as, we obligate a certain dollar amount for that building that, and that is defined then as that we have obligated it, we have created debt. Again, the state defines debt differently than what we do in our own households. It's defined as debt. Rachel certifies it by the end of, by December first, I believe. We have created debt. That's how they define it. It's indebtedness. We don't have to, we do not have to borrow the money. Indebtedness is the term to be used. There's a guy, his, his name is Robert Jolton. He's deceased now. He used to work for, for Dorsey Whitney. He wrote a, he wrote a lot of articles in regards to tax increment financing. And then right there, he calls it pure increment, pure increment revenue is what he called it. So that's, that's how you can do it.
So that being said, could you then, just on the vote of the board, create a, say, a five or ten million dollar housing program? Consider yourself indebted to that and then allocate money out for new housing subsidy.
You, you have to follow the way that, you have to follow what the code defines you to legally. And I do not believe that the code allows you to just be handing money out for houses to be built. That would have to be researched. I don't know that. But we cannot just write a check to do something.
But I mean, following the same procedure you used with the county fairground building with, is a option to build. Could you use that same procedure to do a housing program? Because you're, again, building buildings, you know.
I, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, you're, you're using it now, could you use that in the future?
Yeah, we're doing it for a public building. Uh, I don't, I'm sure.
Probably not, from what I understand in economic development, like how, like handing out money for housing, that's not anywhere in the code. But what it does see in the code is you can use it for public infrastructure. It's all your roads, your water, your sewer, like the developer would get reimbursed through a rebate process. And that's all.
Yeah, I, I get that part of it. I mean, I studied quite a bit earlier, you know, I understand that. But we're using an example of the county creating a ghost, so to speak, debt in order to draw funds out of the current TIP account to build a building at the fairgrounds and then certify that as debt and use that TIP money to, to pay that off. What would be different in that if you did the same thing to promote, you know, housing, building new housing? Because there, that is actually going to supposedly increase the tax base and have a payoff. What is the payoff on the building of the fairgrounds? That's not going to, does, does the fairgrounds pay tax?
No, it'll be, it'll be a, be a big economic benefit because of the people. Look at how busy the fairgrounds was this last year and all the revenue that are brought into this town. It's not that it's a tax that they're paying. It's a, it's a benefit from what the service you've provided, being the building. I mean, that building is antiquated. You, you have to invest in yourself in order to keep up with times. So the, what you get from that building is going to help this county and this town, because it's in this town, from the people that are coming, that are coming to use it. So that's, that.
A small minority, but was there any other?
Small minority.
Was there any other?
Okay.
Finance options researched for that building? Or was there any other ways to do that without using taxpayers?
They're still looking for ways to pay for that building.
Yep, it's in the development agreement.
Yeah.
That, that, that question, it's in the development agreement.
But I still want to go back to housing.
And I don't have your answer for that.
Because if you, if you're using, if you're using this ghost indebtedness to create the money.
But we're not. This year, we're not using it for housing. So right now, to answer your question, we don't have the answer for that. But next year, if the housing stuff comes up again and that wants to be talked about, then that's a discussion we can have at that time.
In, okay, in theory then, would you be supportive of a program like that?
I don't know at this time. I mean, we're not, we're not discussing that today. This is not the hearing for that, so I don't have your answer.
Right, well, the, the conversation got over a lot of different areas.
I don't have your answer. Maybe, maybe these guys do, but I don't.
I don't.
Any other questions on the public hearing? Public hearing at nine fifty-nine? And also during the meeting at nine fifty-nine?
Thank you, everybody, for attending.